Call order meeting for the Normal Town Council for Monday, November 7th, 2022. Please call the roll.
Mayor Kuz.
Here.
Mrs. Lorenz.
Here.
Mr. Nord.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Preston.
Here.
Mr. McCarthy.
Here.
We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
We have no public comment prior to the meeting. We do have one public commenter at the end of the meeting. We go to the omnibus agenda, items considered routine, and we'll be taking this one vote unless a council member would like to pull an item for discussion. Mr. Nord.
I'd like to pull item B as in Bravo and he is an echo.
The second one again.
Echo.
Thank you. Motion for approval.
Second.
Items considered under the omnibus are approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of October 17th, 2022. A motion to approve the year 2023 town calendar, resolution requesting permission to close a portion of US Highway 51 for the annual JC's Christmas Parade. A resolution to accept a bid and authorize a contract with Felmy Dickerson Company for construction of the Children's Discovery Museum climber platform extension. A resolution authorizing a contract with Hair Construction Incorporated for the 2022 Maine and Harris sanitary sewer lining contract. And that is in the amount of forty hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. And a resolution conditionally approving the final plat within one and one-half miles of corporate limits by expedited process having to do with the Armstrong subdivision at 2514 North Gilwanda Avenue. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Lorenz.
Aye.
Mr. Nord.
Aye.
Ms. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Preston.
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy.
Aye.
Mayor Kuz.
Aye. Those items are approved. Item B is a report to receive and file town of normal expenditures for payment as of November 2nd, 2022. Mr. Nord.
I so move.
Second.
Mr. Nord.
Thank you. On expense page two under administration, general, or city manager, general expense, there is an expense for Illinois Department of Employment Security. It's for over ten thousand dollars. The description says March 2022 unemployment tax, which is so, you know, first quarter. I'm not familiar with seeing the unemployment taxes show up on here. Why is, why is, why is this here and why is it, uh? I mean, is this, is this description right? This is from March and we're paying it now here in November?
Mr. Nord, I'm not exactly sure, but I've certainly checked into that. I didn't dig into details on that particular expense, so I'll have to, I'll have to gather information and get back to you.
This is from last budget cycle. Is the auditor aware that this ten thousand dollar payments being paid in this budget cycle?
Cause I don't know what the auditor would be aware of, but when we speak with the audit and do the comprehensive financial review, then we can certainly inquire on that. But in terms of this particular expense, whether or not it's coded correctly, I, I can't answer that without going back to the office and doing, you know, checking with the team.
This is a payroll expense. Why is it appearing under your budget instead of some payroll?
Mr. Nord, I think the question was answered. She needs to look at the information and, and get back to you.
Well, this might be then for Mr. Hune since he's responsible for the accounting.
Well, I happen to have my budget handy here. I believe the municipality's payment on unemployment obligations is covered. Uh, let me take a look. Unemployment insurance is found on page 123 of the budget, which is for the entire organization with the exception of the enterprise funds, which those would be accounted for separately. So unemployment insurance is reflected in administration under the general expense department, um, those, those line items for the entire organization.
All right. Whenever you look into this, I just, it just, it just seems odd. I'm not questioning whether or not it's due. It's just, we've never had it. I just don't recall it ever appearing under this expense item. And it's going to throw things off when we look, look, look at the actuals because this is not something typically in there. So that's why I question it. And I do look forward to hearing why, why we're paying it, well, why it appears we're paying it late.
Sure, sure. I will, uh, like I said, I'll check into it and, and get back to you.
And I would like to move that we remove this item from the budget until we hear back from it, just this one item.
Remove it from the budget?
I mean, remove it from the, the expense so it, so we can hear what it's for.
It's already been paid.
Right. As far as having it allocated to this particular account.
Well, it's, Mr. Nord, it always is allocated to this account. The budget actually, we budgeted a hundred thousand dollars in this line. And, and it's reflected on page 123 of the budget. So paying from this account from this particular department is appropriate, is what we do in the organization. You're asking me if March 2022 is the correct description, and I'm telling you that I don't know. I will get back to you on that. And whether or not it should have been March or any other particular month, my, my understanding is we pay it when the state invoices us. But I could be wrong on that as well.
Yeah, that's not the way unemployment insurance works, but, uh, okay. I mean, I've put it out there that I would like to know what it is before I approve it.
We have, we do have a motion. Is there a second? To remove it. Seeing no second, uh, it will stay on. Further on this item? Please call the roll.
Mr. Nord.
Um, no.
Ms. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Preston.
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy.
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz.
Aye.
Mayor Kuz.
Aye. That item is approved. Item E is a motion to reject bids for the building envelope repair and maintenance project. Mr. Nord.
I so move.
Second.
Mr. Nord.
Um, so a question on this one. Does this work need to be done that was originally budgeted and bid out?
Um, well, what do you mean need to be done? It's work that we budgeted for because we believed it was important for the, um, the future of those buildings. I think we explained that the, these are maintenance projects that when we defer maintenance on our buildings, there is a long-term consequence. So we planned for it and it, it would be something that I guess I would argue needs to be done at some point.
Okay. I mean, that's kind of what I thought is that this work needed to be done. However, what we're doing now is this budget came in twice as much as, or this estimate came in twice as much as what was budgeted. And now we're going to change things and instead of bid it out and invite bidders to come in, um, we're just gonna say, hey, we can afford to spend X amount of dollars. How much of this work can we get done? Which seems to me that now we're going to have less work than you say is absolutely needed done. You know, costs have gone up, so I'm not surprised that this is higher than what was budgeted because gosh, taxpayers see this at the pump of the grocery store, you know, everywhere, everything is much higher. Um, so I would like to, I would just like some understanding as to what we're expecting to see when we bid this out and say, here's how many dollars we can afford to spend. And what we're looking to get back because it's going to be, in my mind, half as much work as what we say is needed to be done. And deferred maintenance is just going to cost the taxpayers more later.
Um, I certainly appreciate that perspective. I think that staff is making this, first of all, we're recommending rejecting the one bid that we received. And then our proposed process for moving forward is to do a, um, a different approach to getting more bidders. So our goal is that we'll have more bidders if we identify this, you know, here's the dollar amount, what can, in more of a qualifications kind of approach, what can you do for X amount of dollars? If we can't get all the work done that we would like to do, obviously, then we will need to re-budget and include more capital funds for this kind of work in the future. We, we, the point on this particular thing is we don't, on this particular agenda item is we don't have the funds budgeted to do all that work. So we're going to try another approach, see if we can get more bidders, um, have it more competitive and see how much work we can get done. And then we'll know how to move forward with, with, you know, other projects in the future.
So specifically, how are you going to try and attract more bidders? What's the effort that's going to be put in to do that?
Um, I'm trying, I think it was mentioned in the report here. Let's see. Performance-based approach is recommended. That was in consult, consultation with the, um, the architect and subject matter experts. Um, yeah. Approach priority, oh, let's see, basically going out and using this, you know, trying to, trying to, this new process to evaluate proposals and see what people can do. We're going to give a shot. If it's not successful, we'll be back to you. So I, I, in terms of continuing to try to cultivate bidders, that's, that's about all I can offer you right now. The, the point right here is we're just trying to reject this so we can hopefully move forward with another approach in the future.
Sure. I just assume costs are going to continue to go up. You know, they're projecting inflation's going to continue to go up for a while. So delaying half of this work for next year is just going to end up costing more.
Are you suggesting that we just move forward with double the budget? Like we just amend the budget because either way, we have to reject bids and start over. Either we budget more and come back to you in the budget process, or we do what we can afford. And I'm not sure I'm following which your preference would be.
How much of a budget surplus do we have?
Right now?
Right now.
I don't have that information with me.
How much did we have last year?
Uh, I think we shared with council that we ended with a seven million dollar surplus, which we are directing to public safety pensions and road projects.
Okay. Um, because this is maintenance and it's just going to end up costing taxpayers more. We've already said that this is needed. I would prefer to see this bid rejected than rebid this out and put in some extra effort to find additional bidders. Not just do the usual process of just publishing it in the normal light and whatever your listserv is, but maybe pick up the phone and call folks because deferred maintenance is something that needs to get done. Otherwise, it's just going to cost more.
We, we, and, and for everyone's awareness, um, we don't simply, rarely do we simply just post things online, but, um, we often send materials out and we have good relationships with all sorts of contractors. So we've noted your request and, and I'm sure we'll do our best. It's to everyone's advantage to have a competitive bidding market and we will do our best to do that within the scope of our procurement policy.
Ms. Smith and Mr. McCarthy and then Mrs. Lorenz.
For the type of work that is sought here, are we really looking at trying to attract a, a different kind of contractor than our major projects? Because it sounds like it's, it's almost, um, a handyman kind of, of, of need that we're seeking on a multiple of, of buildings. Uh, can, can you kind of enlighten me in terms of the, the scope of what, what it is that we're seeking to have the skill set we're looking for?
Um, it is, it is beyond the handyman, typical handyman kind of, um, scope of work, frankly. Um, it's not anything we can do in-house. This is tuck pointing. This is a lot of, um, particular work that needs to be done by experienced contractors. In terms of historic preservation, ex, um, tuck pointing, um, soffit repairs on historic buildings, things like that.
So it's not just the skill set, it's the nature of the buildings and their historical construction that, that we're trying to attract someone with the appropriate skill set for this. I, I'm in favor of rejecting the bid so we can see if somebody is more interested in maybe just portions of the work, um, and would be willing to, to bid on that because they've got crews available for that segment of the project. So I would be in favor of, of rejecting it for that purpose.
Mr. McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor. So if I read the packet accurately, you'll tell me if I'm on it or I'm missing it, uh, Mr. Reese, but, uh, so the new approach is to rebid it with a set amount, not a set amount of work. And is, do I have that accurate? So it's, that's a different approach is we have this much budgeted, we have this much work to do. How much can you do for that amount of money? Is that?
Correct. It's more about proposals. It's, it's more like proposals as opposed to a set bid. Here's what, here's what we have. What can you do and how can that fit in our, in our need and to get the work done to preserve these historic structures and move forward. And if we need to bid, um, excuse me, budget more in the future, we will do so.
So, so that encourages folks to be able to, to look at their bottom lines and how much work they can get done within a, a set amount of money is if I'm reading between the lines accurately. So this is fundamentally a different way that you're of bidding a project. Like I, I don't recall us doing this before in the 10 years I've been sitting here or, or a similar approach. Maybe, maybe I've forgotten, but, uh, uh, it's interesting, uh, to see how that works, uh, here. Um, and I, I know you're just trying to solve a, a budgeting problem here. Uh, I'm certainly supportive, but I just want to make sure I understood it and, uh, it's an interesting approach. I'm, I'm excited to see how, uh, and if it, uh, makes a difference in getting a number of contractors to actually bid for us. Thanks.
Ms. Lorenz.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we stay on, on task here. Um, the issue is about whether or not to reject the bid. What I'm hearing is that I, we don't have the money to do this, so it seems pretty obvious that we have to reject it. And, um, so let's not get off topic here too much by talking about what to do in the future. Let's just reject it on the premise that's, as has been written in the report. And what you choose to do in the future, bring that back to us and we can vote that up or down as well. So at this point, I think, um, if my colleagues don't object, I'll call the question.
Um, we have a motion to call the question. Is there a second?
Second.
Refresh me, Mr. Day. We need a simple majority on a call to question. Five. We need five on call to question. Please call the roll.
Ms. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Preston.
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy.
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz.
Aye.
Mr. Nord.
No.
Mayor Kuz.
Aye. The question is called. We'll go for a, a vote on the, on the item.
I've got a point of question. Um, Ms. Lorenz said that if we vote on this, this simply.
Mr. Nord, the question has been called. We're going to a vote.
Well, but it's a clarification on the vote.
You are out of order, Mr. Nord.
It says.
Mr. Nord, you are out of order.
Is that correct or not?
Mr. Nord, you are out of order.
I'm asking a question, yes or no?
The question has been called. Please call the roll.
Ms. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Preston.
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy.
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz.
Aye.
Mr. Nord.
No.
Ms. Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Kuz.
Aye. The item is approved. We go to general orders. The first item of general orders is a presentation by Jamie Wilkie, partner at Lauterbach and Amen CPA firm on the town's annual financial statements and audit report.
Thank you, Mayor. While Ms. Wilkie and Mr. Hune are coming forward, I'll just introduce this. We've got the, the next, um, three items actually on the agenda, this one and the next two that follow all relate to the annual review of, of the town's financial statements and single audit report. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Hune and Ms. Wilkie.
Thank you. Um, yes, this is our annual report. Um, we, it's a, it's a standard best practice to have the auditor come in and talk to the council about their report as an independent body. Um, I will say a few comments about it first. Uh, we have another clean opinion, which is expected and always happens. Uh, we also have, um, no audit findings to report, uh, which is very nice indeed. Uh, and the town's, uh, financial position remains in a very strong position as of the end of this fiscal year. Um, I want to introduce Jamie Wilkie, who's a partner of Lauterbach and Amen. She works closely with, with myself and my staff, uh, as part of the audit process. And she has a few words to say, I'm sure, about the audit process as part of her standards require.
Good evening.
Whoops. Your microphone's not on.
We can switch?
There we go. Musical chair.
Will adapt.
Yep. Thank you.
No problem. Good evening. Thank you for having us this evening. Uh, certainly I want to start off the evening by thanking the staff involved. Um, as I know I've said in years past, this really is a multi-month process from start to finish. Uh, and certainly we want to thank the efforts of the, the team involved and, and certainly appreciate all of their hard work. So, thank you. Uh, current state statute in Illinois does require that the town undertake an independent audit each fiscal cycle. Uh, so we're here this evening to present the results. I know many of you have a few documents in front of you this evening. Uh, the focus of tonight's presentation will be on the largest document, uh, what we call the annual comprehensive financial report or ACFER. Um, so as you have the ability to follow along this evening, that would be the large bound document with the logo on front. Uh, so first of all, I want to start off on page eight of that report, which provides a copy of the certificate of achievement or excellence in financial reporting. Uh, just to note, this is another independent third-party review of the town's annual audit. It is conducted by the Government Finance Officers Association. And in the government space is really deemed the highest level financial reporting that any local government can undertake. Uh, so you'll see the award was provided for last year's audit document. Uh, we have again submitted this year's audit to the program, obviously anticipating receipt again of that prestigious award. So uh, many years in a row now that the town has been receiving that. If we flip just a couple of more pages to page 11 through 13, you'll find the independent auditor's report this evening. Uh, as Andrew indicated, we did issue a clean or what we call unmodified audit opinion. Uh, that is the highest level opinion that the town can receive each year. Uh, when we come in to do our annual audit, we really have two primary goals. Number one, to hopefully issue that unmodified opinion, which indicates that the financial statements as presented are in fact materially correct. And number two, as part of that process, you'll see discussion in the audit opinion that we are required to assess the overall internal control environment. Uh, so we do take a look at policies, procedures, uh, we go through observation, detailed testing of controls, third-party confirmation, and certainly if there were any areas of concern or red flags as part of that sampling and testing, we would have to bring those forth this evening. Um, and as Andrew indicated, we had no such findings. So truly a clean audit opinion. Immediately after the opinion on pages 15 through 26 of the document, I do want to point out what I would probably deem one of the most important sections of the report from any council member perspective. Uh, that encompasses what we call management's discussion and analysis or M D N A. Uh, you'll find 12 pages provided within this section of the report. I really call this the executive summary to the audit. Uh, you all have well over 200 pages to try to digest. Uh, and that seems to be growing each year as the governmental accounting standards board comes out with new pronouncements. Uh, so certainly this is a great part of the report to really kind of be able to get the key highlights for the year. You'll find discussion of results compared to last fiscal year, a major trend analysis, discussion of capital asset investment throughout the year, as well as long-term debt-related activity. Um, as Andrew indicated, there was strong performance in this past fiscal year uh, consistent with what we're seeing across many of our municipalities, obviously the rebounding from pandemic sales tax that has been, um, certainly up in comparison to pandemic years. Um, and even prior to that in some cases. So, uh, along with economic development that happened within the community, that certainly helped drive some of those positive results. So I won't go into numbers detail tonight, but certainly, um, if you're looking for some of those key highlights and trends, again, I would encourage you to read pages 15 through 26. Uh, the last section of the large document I do want to point out this evening is the very last tab in that report called the statistical section. I do always point this out to our councils and boards because there's really a wealth of historical information at the back of the document. It's kind of hidden all the way at the back. Uh, but if you want to have some, uh, context to that management discussion and analysis, if you're curious what financial results, for example, were five and 10 years ago, uh, this is the place within the document to be able to find that historical analysis. Uh, you'll see schedules covering financial results, uh, revenue activity, long-term debt, operating indicators, um, demographic information. So really a wealth of information that's provided within the last tab of that document. Uh, as part of the audit, we do also issue what we call a management letter. Uh, we did issue one comment for this year that would be provided under separate document this evening. Uh, we do have a governmental accounting standards board or GASB change for next fiscal cycle for the town. Uh, that does relate to how the town reports leases, both on the revenue side of the transaction and the expense side. Um, for any of you that are familiar with private industry, GASB is following FASB in this regard. And um, I always say GASB is usually about 10 years behind FASB. So, um, we're catching up with this statement. So we'll be working with the team here internally uh, to look at the potential impact for next fiscal year reporting. Uh, as part of the audit, we were also required this year to perform a single audit, and that is a separate compliance-related audit uh, with regard to the town's federal funds that are received each year. Uh, so current requirements are if you expend more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal grant awards in a single cycle, uh, we are required to provide some additional opinion and compliance testing around those grants specifically. Uh, we have issued again an unmodified or clean opinion related to that piece of the audit process. Um, so certainly happy to open it up this evening for any questions that the council might have, but uh, just want to reiterate the clean audit opinion, no findings, and, and really a pleasure to work with the staff each year.
Great. Ms. Smith.
Um, thank you for being here tonight to provide some direct, um, communications. Um, I did see the letter about the, uh, treatment of leases under GASB. And as far as I know, the Financial Accounting Standards Board has also extended that.
Yes.
Um, so uh, what caused that to rise up to the level that you felt it should be part of a management letter since it was being extended? The deadline for implementation was being extended for, um, all government bodies.
So what we, so the original statement came out just prior to the pandemic, GASB had issued. And so, um, when the pandemic hit, they delayed a number of GASB pronouncements. This one was delayed 18 months from the original implementation. Um, when the original. When the original statement came out, because of the timing of the issuance and then the immediate pandemic after, GASB had not really released their typical flow of implementation guide questions and guidance and things along those lines. So I will be quite frank, most communities and most auditors didn't have the typical tool, tools out there from GASB to go through that implementation. Once we got through the pandemic, a lot of that guidance did come out, kind of sporadically, over the last couple of years. And in seeing some of that implementation guidance, we really felt like for the town, there could be impact to the financial statements. You all do have a number of leases, both the revenue side and the expense side. And so as we started looking at some of our larger communities, we felt it was important to put in the management letter so that councils were aware.
One of the things that I've been reading has indicated that the, that now that, in essence, lease obligations will wind up on the balance sheet-
Correct.
-instead of simply as an expense item on the income side-
Right.
-income and expense side, that it could alter some financial ratios. Does our statistical report have any of those financial ratios that might be impacted?
No. And what I will tell you is the impact overall is probably not going to impact the typical ratios that we normally look at. And I say that because it's picking up, in, in certain cases, a debit on the balance sheet and a credit on the balance sheet. So the net effect, especially in the year of implementation, is pretty immaterial for most communities. And we've already gone through this exercise with our June 30th year-ends. They were the first group to implement.
And the single audit report that you've provided along with the audit, the comprehensive financial report, is, is any of the ARPA, ARPA money in this report, or does that, that's going to, what we're going to see next year?
That report's based on what we spent in terms of the funds and-
Andrew?
I'll try this one. Yeah, that report's based on the, the actual spending versus the receipt. So we will be sparing those funds. We didn't spend anything as of '22.
Okay. And, and it is federal dollars and not any state or other grants from any other sources in this?
Correct.
Okay. And I do want to highlight with the certificate, if you could just confirm for the record, how many years has it been that the town of Normal has received that certificate for excellence in financial reporting?
To be candid, I kind of stopped counting a long time ago, but I think we're getting close to 30 years now with it.
Okay. That's all I have. Thanks.
Further on this side? Please call the roll. Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Um, a question on page 51 of the report. You talked about enterprise funds. The second to last paragraph. Enterprise funds? Can enterprise funds be used for purposes outside of that enterprise?
Technically, yes, as long as the funding source wasn't a restricted funding source, like a bond proceed or a grant.
What about like a water fund, enterprise fund? Can it be used for purposes outside of the water fund?
Yes, technically it can.
Okay. So there's no restrictions on that?
It depends on the revenue stream that you're talking about coming into the fund.
If it was a fee collected from the sale of water?
No external restriction or legal restriction on that.
None? Okay. And then... It's interesting, there's a statute that another municipality gave me that said there was a restriction on it.
If the attorney has a different opinion, I'm-
The attorney does have, well, his opinion was already asked, and it was that Normal doesn't have to follow the restrictions that the state puts out concerning the enterprise water. Well, concerning this, this particular statute, which says, it's 65 ILCS 5, 11-129-11. It says, "All revenue derived from the operation of a water supply system, improvement or extension constructed or acquired under Section 11-129-9 shall be set aside and collected and deposited in a special fund," which is what we're doing. Then it also says, "The fund shall only be used for the purpose of paying the cost of operating and maintaining the water supply system." Improvement or extension-
Point of order, Mayor. Why are we reading a statute that the auditor has no expertise to-
Just want you to be aware of this, because this is something that, you know, it was a taxpayer protection statute.
I, I will uphold that point of order.
Excuse me?
I will uphold that point of order. That, that is out of order.
Okay. I just want you to be aware of this, because this is something that another municipality had brought to my attention. And I just wanted to make sure you knew about it, because, you know, you're the one auditing the books.
Noted.
Then, through the audit of the books too, there's a Supreme Court ruling that came out that, like, all of your transportation-related taxes need to go towards transportation-related expenses. Are you familiar with that one?
Briefly. I'm not an attorney, so-
Okay. So anyway, Normal has got use tax and locomotive fuel tax and some other transportation-related fees and taxes that just go straight into the gen, into the general fund. And after that, there's no direct transfer going into like a roadway fund. Is that appropriate accountability to show that those dollars were used for transportation-related projects?
Well, MFT dollars are audited by MFT separately as well. Use tax, I don't know what specific use tax you're referencing.
Well, it would be locomotive fuel taxes. Um, this is the vehicle, um, the vehicle use tax for titled items, including automobiles or motorcycles. It's listed on the town's website, that it says that this tax is to support general fund operations, which according to that case, it said that, that because of the lockbox amendment or the Safe Roads Act, whenever that was passed, which was a constitutional amendment, that that, that those dollars have to go towards transportation-related projects and not towards general operations. So I just want to know if you're aware, and if you looked at that, to make sure the town is spending them or allocating them correctly?
I mean, we'd have to confer with the attorney on that. That's a legal interpretation of statute, and I'm by no means an attorney.
Okay. So that was something that-
I'm happy to dig into it, but I don't have those answers this evening in front of me.
Sure. I mean, there's, this law firm said that they're going to be leasing-
Right.
-municipalities throughout the state. So I just wanted to know if you were aware of that yet. Then also, the township collects road and bridge tax dollars from, you know, all of the residents, and they give a portion of those over to the town. And they have asked before if there was some documentation that shows in the books that their dollars were actually put towards the road fund, which whenever the town receives those dollars, it goes straight into the general fund. And there's no like matching dollar amount that then goes over to the roadway fund or any roadway project. When you looked through this, did you see any transparency for how those dollars that we receive from the township, how they flow over into the appropriate fund?
So the township dollars are incrementally very small. So each year, the town has more than expenses that would even come in from those township roadway dollars. So yes, those are accounted for as part of eligible expenses each year.
Okay. Did you total up though, all of the, all of the funds that go into those roadway projects to make sure that that's correct?
That's not an audit procedure. No.
Okay. Because there's like $330,000. So it's a fairly sizable number. And then in the roadway funds, you can see all the inputs that come from like the state motor fuel tax and other things. There's just no matching dollar that goes in there.
No, that, that, I, I can correct you later, but it's not state motor fuel tax that goes into the roadway fund. That's not true.
Well, there is, state motor fuel tax goes into a roadway construction fund.
Stays in the motor fuel tax fund. The roadway fund is funded with other sources.
Okay. But, but the state motor fuel tax fund is money that comes in from the state. The roadway fund then is the one that dollars could go. Okay.
That's local.
Yeah. So, anyway, I just wanted to ask. I assumed you didn't look, so I'm not surprised there. And the, well, because these are a lot of small things, and unless you're involved in the day-to-day, you may not know to look there. Because I understand your job is not to look into detail.
It's just not the approach to a financial statement audit. We don't look at every transaction, and there has to be a scope of materiality. Otherwise, we would move in for an entire year to get through the audit process.
Sure.
So, no. There's not everything that's going to hit that scope.
So the award that the town receives, does that award say that everything the town did was correct? Or is that just that the presentation of the numbers and the format?
Correct. There's no award to say a town has been perfectly managed or along those lines. The award relates to required disclosure, transparency items, and the look of the report. You are correct.
All right. Thank you.
Further on this?
Just a couple of comments?
Certainly.
Okay. First of all, thank you to Ms. Wilkie and the Lauterbach and Amen team for spending months working on the town's audit and getting us to this point. Thank you to certainly the finance department for getting us ready for the audit and, and kind of shepherding the process. So just a couple of things, I just wanted to follow up. Specifically in regard to transportation, we've, we've talked about this a number of times, the transportation spend. I've even shared the, the dollar amounts. But I guess long-term, if this is going to continue to be an issue, or if there's truly a concern, legitimate concern, and you want us to have a particular audit review, we can do that. That would be a separate contract if, if that's necessary. But specifically talking, I guess more for the audience awareness, the road and bridge fund, for example, road and bridge tax that's levied by Normal Township, that's under $400,000 a year of revenue to the town. So let's say about $380,000, $385,000-ish dollars that comes into the town. We, the money goes into the general fund, we then transfer it into the roadway fund. The road and bridge tax, among other things, funds the roadway fund. And for example, last fiscal year, $382,000 from the road and bridge tax, which was a property tax levy from the county, from the township, the vehicle use tax of almost $650,000, and the locomotive fuel tax of 1.8 million. So we had about 2.8, almost $2.9 million of revenue from transportation-related taxes. We spent, we transferred some, most of that money into the general, or excuse me, into the roadway fund, and we spent 6.2 million. So we are spending much, much more every year in the roadway fund than those three revenue sources. In addition, there are many other transportation-related expenses that qualify per state statute that are not even covered in these numbers. So the 6.2 million dollars that we spent was just in the roadway fund. It didn't include any of the maintenance work, anything like that. So, you know, we've covered this many, many times, and I just wanted to share that if there's, if there's a concern and if it's helpful, we can engage audit review, but that would be a separate contract.
Mr. McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to start off by saying thanks to Ms. Reese and, and Mr. Hune and your staffs. You know, every year when we get these documents, uh, every year the council gets handed these books and reports, and we're reminded what unmodified means and clean means and all of that. And it's really common for us, I've been here a decade now, to, to read about this award, and it seems really common every year. I didn't realize it had been 30. Thanks for, for that. But it's not common. By the look on the auditor's face, it's not common for a municipality to earn that award. And so I just want to pause and acknowledge staff and for its exemplary record in transparency and accuracy in financial reporting. Dispersions notwithstanding tonight, you guys do a great job at, at what you do and, and you, by giving us such good reliable information, help us to do what we need to do up here, which is be good stewards of taxpayer dollars. And so I'm, I'm excited to receive this. I'm excited to, to get, uh, the report again. Uh, you know, as, as far as all the information on the roadway fund, I, you know, the, the budget's published. It's, it's actually transparently online and with an interactive for, format now. Uh, you know, the media's using it, citizens are using it. I just invite all of my council members to use it as well. Uh, it's pretty easy to see where money comes in and, and money goes out if you're really trying to, to get to true answers. It's, uh, it's unfortunate that this keeps coming up and, and we're, we're trying to twist something out. And a bad situation when the reality is, is we're spending a lot of money on our roadway funds, more than we're, we're, we're taking in from, from the dedicated revenue sources. It's pretty clear in the reports that that's what's going on. And, and I just hope we can get back to, to concentrating on continuing to fund well and do good work and instead of trying to drag people through the mud. Thanks.
Mr. Nord?
Thank you. Specifically with the township's money that they give us, the 380-some thousand dollars, why can't we just show a matching transfer from the general fund to the roadway fund for that exact dollar amount? That's what they had asked for at the township meeting that you were at, and that would, and that would clear that up. There would be no question. So why is that not an option? Because that would, that would absolutely clear up the township's question.
Uh, let me ask you a question, Mr. Nord, on that. What, what problem are you trying to solve here?
The first one would be the problem that the townships brought up, that they wanted to see transparency, and they asked at that meeting why the town simply can't do a matching transfer. So that way it is completely transparent, that those dollars do go to the roadway fund.
Actually, that's not quite accurate. What they wanted was a line item of spending.
No. That's recorded meeting, so we could go through and look at it. They said you could do that if you wanted to, because, you know, that would be an option, but as long as there is a transfer that shows up that it came from there-
Ms. Reese?
-that their dollars went over there.
Um, well, I think we've gotten to the point where it's basically trying to more clearly explain, and clear, and obviously I'm not doing a good job, but the Normal Township's property tax levy, called the road and bridge tax, that is assessed and levied by the township. The town receives that, that money and goes through the county, town receives it. What we receive is $382,000. $382,000. That went into the general fund, went into this particular pot, which we've explained is the town's organizational checking account, really. That's, that's the pot. What we transferred into the roadway fund was, um, last fiscal year, 1.9 million. We received 380,000 from this one source, but we took that source, lots of all other revenues, and last year we transferred 1.9 million into the roadway fund. The logic dictates that we took that money and we moved it over, along with other revenue sources. So I, I'm not exactly sure how to make it clearer than if we just show multiple transfers and say, okay, we got this from the county through the, the township levy, and this dollar goes here, and we got this money from this source, and this dollar goes here. We just, we just transferred that plus more over to the roadway fund, and we spent it. So I, I don't know how to make that clearer.
Well, I'm confused. This is the report that the town gets. It's got other expenses that we receive from other places. It's got fire pension, police pensions, IMRF and other things. Those dollars get transferred into the other funds. But you say that the town transferred 1.9 million dollars to the roadway fund. I've got the actual numbers here. It says it's from actual fiscal year 2020 to 2021. So would this be last year then?
I'm looking at 2122. I'm looking at the year we're budgeting, and I'm looking at my budget document.
Okay. Well, I'm looking at last year, and last year's got, okay, so we're looking at two separate years. But for last year, they had road and bridge tax of $388,000. This year, and then that roadway fund for that same year, which, 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 I bring this up because the township brought this up for last year's budget numbers, okay?
Mr. Nord, I, I'm very well aware.
And that's who I'm trying to represent, are all the taxpayers in Normal Township, which is, you know, most of Normal, that have requested this. Only $485,000 was actually transferred to the roadway fund.
True.
And there was vehicle use tax of a half a million dollars, locomotive fuel tax of a million. So when you say we're transferring more than enough, that might be the case this year, or this past year, but it's not been the case consistently in the past. So it's simply just doing that accounting transfer, that accounting change, which is just a transfer, would just be simple and clear things up.
One, one more quick thing, more for the audience awareness. The, and I don't know what you're, you're looking at. I'll take you at your word in terms of those numbers. I'm- I'm just looking at the budget document. As we've shared, transportation spending is not only capital improvements in the roadways. Transportation spending per state statute includes maintenance on roadways. Maintenance on roadways is paid from the general fund. This Public Works Streets Division has a budget of $3 million for one year. $3 million. That is statutorily acceptable transportation spending. That's paid by the general fund. So that's another little wrinkle. The normal township dollars of 380,000 come into the general fund. We can either spend those at the Public Works Streets Division, or we can transfer those to the roadway fund. Either way, statutorily, those are acceptable transportation investments.
Chicago had the same argument, and eventually it's going to come and hit the town. But I've done my point of bringing it up as a concern. Thank you.
I appreciate that, Mr. Nord. And Mr. Day has responded from a legal perspective numerous times. So I, I appreciate you looking out for the town. That is exactly what we do as well. And we would, we would never put the town in a situation where we would risk our transportation dollars.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yeah, I'd like to get us back on topic that we're actually here to talk about.
Exactly. Thank you.
That the auditor is sitting here, so I'd like to call a question.
Well, there's no question to call this, since it's a report, but I'm in agreement. We're not here to discuss the roadway fund. We're here to discuss the audit. Further questions on the audit? Ms. Smith?
If I could try to summarize what the audit firm has done. Your task under the audit engagement was to first test internal controls and determine whether or not you could rely on the transaction reports as a viable
Source document.
Source document for what ultimately winds up in the financial statements. You're auditing on the basis of whether or not the transactions were recorded in accordance with governmently accepted accounting principles.
Correct.
And your work indicated that the internal controls are sound.
Correct.
That limited how much you had to test transactions. You were looking for material misstatements. You found none. You did not have to make any adjusting entries to correct any record-keeping that had been done prior to your initiating the audit. And at the end of it, you came up with an unmodified opinion that you were satisfied that these financial statements are done in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles and accurately reflect the financial statement of the town.
Correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Lorenz?
Thank you, Mayor. We have a number of guests from a class here, and I just want to, for the sake of putting a bow on this, help them understand what's just happened here. I think Ms. Smith gave a nice explanation of what we're here to have heard and accept from the auditor. It's very much of a financial accounting thing. Much of what you've heard today, otherwise outside of the audit, per se, are some issues that my colleague here to my left has some longstanding concerns about. They have nothing really to do with the audit itself, but likes to kind of find moments to talk about these issues, which are a continual concern for him. So for our students, in terms of what you're observing here, I think that puts a bow on it. So a couple of nods, look, look, look like now that helps. Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Wilkie, for the presentation.
Thank you for having us this evening.
We appreciate the work that you all do. And again, kudos to our financial staff for delivering a possibility of a clean audit to our auditor. Thank you.
I would like to add, just Felicia Oth is our financial manager, and she took over this audit at a very difficult time and managed it very well. She's very competent, and I appreciate all the work she did with this year audit.
Item eight is a resolution to accept the audit in Town of Normal financial statements and report on internal controls from the town's auditor and fiscal year ending March 31st, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Is there discussion on this item? Please call a roll.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mirakus?
Aye. That resolution is approved. Item nine is a resolution to accept the federal compliance audit for the year ending March 31st, 2022.
With approval?
Thank you. Discussion on this. Please call a roll.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mirakus?
Aye. That resolution is approved. Item 10 is a resolution authorizing the renewal of the Employee Group Health Dental Life AD&amp;D and Medicare Advantage Insurance Program.
With approval?
Second.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm going to invite Ms. Keer to come forward. She's our Human Resources Director, who will be available if you have any questions. We also have Mr. Wojcik from the Horton Group here to respond to any council questions. As you know, the last couple of years, we have, have been challenging for the health fund. And so what we're asking tonight is for council to renew our group insurance program for our employee package, our employee benefit package. And we have some good news to report this year. Last year we had, we struggled. We needed a large premium increase, and this year we're in a much better position. But you've heard Mr. Hune report to you in our Every Fall Financial Trends Report, that one of the funds that he is concerned about for long-term sustainability is, has been our health fund. This year, we're pleased to come to you with what I believe is a very reasonable renewal in terms of a dollar amount. Our budget anticipated, I believe, an 8% increase on premiums for 2023, and we're in a position where we probably could get by with a 5% increase, but we are recommending a 7% increase, because this particular year, the health fund did go down in terms of its reserves to an uncomfortable level. And we would like to take this opportunity, since we have a good renewal, to try to build up our reserves a little bit for, for the future. So I think I maybe stole your thunder, but I'm going to, I guess, turn it over to Ms. Keer and Mr. Wojcik.
You did, but I'm absolutely comfortable with it. Thank you, City Manager Reese. You know, that was very well stated. I think to, to put a bow on those comments, I think that we are, we're poised to be in a position this coming year to rebuild the health fund. We certainly know that that's been an area of concern. We've been watching it very closely as well. And we certainly appreciate the Horton Group coming down and, you know, providing their insight. I think we've got a great renewal on the table, largely due to their efforts. So, so I appreciate those comments.
Appreciate that. Good evening. How deep do you want me to go? We are in a better spot this year, no doubt. Last year, we talked about it. There was a bit of a rebound effect from the pandemic a year prior. Pardon my voice. It's not COVID. I tested. But it's, we had, we had a lot of unpredictability in the market the past couple of years. 2020, our claims were quite low. Our large claims were quite low. 2021, it rebounded, and that hit hard. This year's been more of a normal year, if you could use that term in insurance. You're looking for predictability. So it was a little more predictable when we went to the market this year to present your case to the market. Now, we're coming off of a 16-month rate guarantee from the previous stop-loss carriers. We moved carriers last year to get to that. We had no other options to protect the town. So coming off of that into where we're at today is a very good, we had, again, changed reinsurance carriers, but now we're with a administrator that allows us to do that. So we have more flexibility to shop that. We went to 15 markets this year. We have more flexibility to also shop besides stop-loss, the pharmaceutical benefit manager, and negotiate better rebates. We've done that as well. So it's all had a very positive effect, and I appreciate the town and your staff to allow being open to these innovative ideas to help control your costs, because that's what it takes. Your plan is self-funded. So we got your fixed costs in a very excellent spot. The rest is claims, and now how do we control claims, keep people healthy, you know, monitor the best use of healthcare dollars to control costs. I could go on for two more hours. But answer any questions, please.
Any questions or comments? Apparently not. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. No, we have time for questions or comments.
Okay. I think I have one. Uh, let's see. I had a couple of them.
Bless you.
I'm gonna pass. Never mind.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Please call a roll.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mirakus?
Aye. The resolution is approved. Item 11 is a motion to authorize the preparation of the 2022 property tax levy.
With approval?
Second.
Ms. Reese, give.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm going to invite Mr. Hune back up here. This is the time of year when we ask council to, to basically give us permission to prepare the levy. We're telling you right now in this report what we are proposing the property tax levy should be for 2022, collectible in 2023. And then we will come back to you in a month for you to formally approve the levy. And then once it's approved, we file it with the county, and the county then applies that to all properties in the community. What we're proposing tonight is basically a flat dollar amount, a flat levy from same number, same dollar amount as last year. And given our anticipated growth in EAV, equalized assessed value, we believe that impact on the rate will be almost a 10-cent reduction. And so it's, it comes down to 9.87 cents in terms of a reduction in the property tax rate. So this property tax levy is used primarily to fund our retirement and pension costs and the normal public library. Mr. Hune, do you have any other comments you would like to share? And certainly, we'll be prepared to answer any questions council may have.
No, Ms. Reese covered it very well. The report goes through quite a bit of detail. We can totally discuss it at any level you like, but again, it's a flat levy. We're anticipating a sizable increase in EAV, 7.25%. And that, that, you have a levy that's the same as last year, and increase in EAV, then the rate drops accordingly to accommodate that, almost 10%, 10 cent drop in rate. And this, of course, is just to get authority to, to prepare. We offered this recommendation as part of our process to date, and then we'll come back at a later date and have you formally adopt it. But at this time, we would be recommending this, this flat levy.
Ms. Smith?
Well, at the risk of being redundant, just to be clear, so the town is going to hold level the amount of dollars. And in the process of holding that level, the percentage will drop, that we anticipate the percentage will drop that will be charged to homeowners, because if we had held the percentage the same, then if their assessed value went up, then their assessment might increase, not because we have changed the percentage, but because their home had increased in value. So we're, we're attacking it by holding our dollar amount level, and the impact will be that they may actually see a drop in what they pay to the Town of Normal for property taxes. Is that correct?
I think you said percent. You probably meant tax rate. So we kept, yeah, if we kept the tax rate the same as last year, then we would be essentially doing a 7.25% increase in what the individual would be paying. At this time, we're keeping the tax rate, the levy, exactly the same. The EAV drops up, so to accommodate that, we need to drop down the rate. So yes, the taxpayer, generally speaking, will be paying exactly what they paid us last year, or perhaps less dependent on what their assessed value does.
Thank you.
Further questions or comments, Mr. McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. I think that last little part that you added matters, is depends on what their assessment does. Right? So obviously, and just to reiterate for everybody watching, is we're only, we, we all get a tax bill, and portions come from multiple bodies in the community, not just the Town of Normal. And ours is actually a relatively small portion of everybody's property tax bill, and that's all we're talking about tonight. I know we lost most of the students, but the Town of Normal only has a small portion of the property tax bill that actually shows up in our, our mailbox. And, and that's all we have purview to do and talk about, and so that's all we're authorized to address this evening. Again, I guess I want to say thank you for the, the report and the, and the work on this. You know, I'm happy to see that we're keeping the levy flat, the same for '23 as we did for '22. I also want to call out to the public and recognize the work to do that. I know that, that is, to use these funds to fund pensions, which is what we're doing here tonight, folks, is that money's had to be reduced or cut altogether from funding other town functions, so we didn't have to increase the tax levy to citizens of Town of Normal. And I know that takes works. Now you have to figure out how to fund those other things, those other functions with a different money. And fortunately, we've had some increase in growth and expansion and good economic development activities here in the town. We're able to do that. I know we won't always be able to do that. That won't always be the case, but I appreciate that we're able to do it this year. I'm a big optimistic that this means we're making progress on pension funding. And I'm sure that will come up here, or maybe, maybe it'll come up here tonight a little bit. I'm assuming it will. And that a pension funding level is, is going back to where I like to see it, and that we're not asking any more from the taxpayers to, to fund pensions at, at a good level, which I think is not common in small-town America. Usually municipalities our size or smaller, or even larger, are asking for increasing amounts of revenue to fund pensions, and we're not doing that this year, which is a substantial kudos. And, and again, there's a lot, a lot of reasons for that, but, or a few solid reasons for that, but I won't spend hours talking about that. And, you know, I like this plan because of the funding level in the pensions, and because it does everything that we needed to do, and we still have money to pay for the other functions. We're not substantially cutting everything out of the budget to, to just fund pensions. You know, a few years ago, I agreed to go along with reducing our pension funding levels, because frankly, the budget wasn't supporting it without substantial increases in, in taxing our residents. And, and my colleagues wanted to do it, and I was happy to do that at that time. And, but I did at that time ask my colleagues if they would join me in restoring to a more aggressive pension funding that is being suggested with this pension, with this property tax levy. And when the, when the timing was right to do that, well, that opportunity is tonight, and with this recommended proposal. So I asked my colleagues in joining me and supporting the preparation of the property tax level as proposed, so that we can meet our pension funding obligations and get a little more aggressive, so we hopefully can make some progress on our pension funding levels and not costing the taxpayers any more money. Thank you.
Further on this item? Mr. Nord?
Thank you. Is there any statutory limitation that says we cannot use general funds to help fund pensions?
No.
No. No, in fact, No, in fact, um, if I could jump in and, and probably add a little bit more than Mr. Hune's note, um, on your council report packet page 11 dash four, it shows the funding, what the levy will be funding. And it shows police pension, fire pension, IMRF, which is the non-public safety pension program, social security, Medicare and Normal Public Library. You'll see that there's also a line that says general fund and it says $0. Um, these, the levy that we're asking council to approve tonight does not fully, um, fulfill the town's funding obligation for pensions. Therefore, we will be making up the difference, uh, with the general fund.
Okay, good. I mean, cause I've always thought that, but I know I've heard before that the property taxes go to fund pensions, but there's no statutory reason we have to do that. That's just something that internally we just, someone has decided to do. Okay. Then according to this report, we had an $11 million surplus in 2021 and 2022, we had, uh, is it a 300 and, I lost my page? Was it a $369,000 surplus? Is that right? So, you know, taking just those two years into account in our, in our, um, our other fund balances are all doing very, very well, right? Okay. So is there a reason why we couldn't lower the property tax rate? Because we've got so much additional money that has come in to the general fund and we can use that to help, you know, to help our taxpayers and property values. And it would be great for PR for the town to say, hey, we've actually lowered our property taxes going against inflation. I mean, that will be, that would be news. So I'd like to hear your thought on using some of those dollars to lower it a little bit so we get all those other benefits.
Mr. Nord, that's a council decision, not a staff decision. So, Mr. Hune, I'd.
We rely on.
Redirect that to council.
Well, we rely on staff to see if it's possible. So is it possible?
We know it's possible. We know it's possible, Mr. Nord.
Well, I mean, we do kind of follow what staff says, like, most of the time. So I would like to hear staff's opinion.
I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Reese.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. I, I will just jump in and say a couple of, um, make a couple of comments about your, your inquiry. Council can choose whatever council decides to do. This is a recommendation to council on what we believe is financially, um, a good strategy and a good approach. And under this proposed scenario, we are moving our funding level back to 100% funding for public safety pensions by 2040. And we're able to keep our property tax levy flat, which, um, will ultimately reflect a reduced rate. So I believe it's a good story. You are reducing the rate. Um, I do want to point out though, that the last two years, when we talk about the surplus that we've had, the surplus was used to pay off debt. So that helped us pay our callable bonds. Um, I don't remember, 8 million of callable bonds? 8.2 million. $8.2 million of callable bonds. So we took that debt off our books. This year, the surplus is for the fiscal year that just ended, we're using those surplus dollars to further supplement public safety pensions and to do more road projects. So basically we're calling it pensions and pavement is where that surplus went to. Can council choose to do something else with the property level, uh, property levy? Absolutely. The risk would be, which is why staff would not recommend this, but the risk would be, um, the, the unknowns of the general fund. You'd be fully relying on the general fund and primarily sales tax dollars and the like, which could be a little bit more, um, um, yeah, thank you, um, subject to, uh, changes in the economy.
You still have the floor, Mr. Nord.
Okay, thank you. So based on that math, it sounds like there's three and a half million left of surplus that, you know, we still have, you know, the 11 minus the eight plus the 369 that we have. So we were well off enough. So what is the surplus we have then?
Last year's surplus or this year's surplus?
Last year plus this year.
Last year's surplus was 11 and some change. Uh, majority of that went to pay off the debt service. Uh, we moved about 3 million of that to capital funding for needs in parks and wrecked facilities. So that surplus was used up as part of the budget process for capital spending, but lion's share went to debt payoff.
Okay, well, we were so well off that we were able to buy two luxury vehicles this last meeting.
Point of order, Mayor. Can we get back to the topic, please? Can we just?
Circle back to the topic, Mr. Nord.
Well, that is the topic is, I think that we've shown.
No, the top, the topic is the property tax levy.
Okay. I would like to see, I guess where I'm going with this is I would like to see us transfer some money from the general fund over to, um, offset the property taxes so we can actually lower them a few hundred thousand dollars. I think that's a small ask because we did have enough money to buy luxury vehicles that will cost hundreds more, or at least a hundred thousand dollars more than had we bought something that was, you know, moderately priced, like what we usually buy. So I'd like to see if council would like to do that because we had enough to buy a luxury item for ourselves. Let's return the favor to the taxpayers and reduce their, reduce their expense because these, because our budget surplus is because they paid more than what was, what was, what was actually required. So I'd like to hear if anybody has an appetite for lowering property taxes. I mean, a couple hundred thousand dollars is, is that really gonna hurt us?
I think that's a loaded question, Mr. Nord. And I would encourage you, as I have in the past, to reach out to your fellow council members and have that discussion, uh, which you pretty much steadfastly refuse to do other than at this table. Uh, there are seven of us at the tables, including you, and you could reach out to them, meet with the council members and make your case.
I have emailed council members and people don't respond. I asked Ms. Reese to, or I asked the, the town attorney for a question and Ms. Reese orders him not to answer when I ask.
Point of order, Mayor. Point of order. Can we stop this ridiculousness?
Point of order is taken. Mr. Nord, I think, um, we'll move on here. Ms. Smith?
Well, as my colleague pointed out earlier, we're subject in some of our bids to rejecting them because of increasing cost. And so, um, it is a situation where the town is experiencing the same inflation that is impacting consumers in our community. Um, and in terms of cutting back in the hopes that good fortune will follow, um, the 21 surplus was a surprise because of the ability to have online sales talks in our early, for the first time, we were collecting those, the, with some legislation changes. We had not been receiving that. And when people were stuck at home, they were making a lot of online purchases and we're finally getting sales tax from that. Some of the surplus this year is generated from the ARPA funding, which will not be repeated in, in the foreseeable future. So that is not something that we can rely on. And in terms of, of recognizing that our future, we are looking at having a situation where, um, State Farm is providing 23.53% of employment in the town. Rivian is at, um, 5.86%. And in its heyday, 10 years earlier, Mitsubishi was only at 2.04%. So I think there's a rationale for why we feel that we can hold the property tax levy steady, but I think it would be not prudent to rely on the possibility that other revenue sources can fill in for additional dollars. Um, the, the staff has made, uh, arguments and presented us with, with the evidence to support the, the budget dollars that they have provided to us. They'll do so for the upcoming year in the near future. And, and I'm satisfied that we're able to keep the tax levy level. And some individuals may see a drop in what they're actually paying. Thank you.
Ms. Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, I had to get my thoughts back together because I wanted to get back to topic here, which is the, um, tax levy. Um, and just for clarification, cause I know we've, everybody's stuck on today, um, and we're only talking about today, but, um, can you help me draw out even for the future when we're talking about this and taking this particular approach, um, that we have the possibility of having some stability within the property tax versus if we, um, well, we have several options. One of them would be to not, um, increase our funding to, um, our funding levels to the pensions, which could hurt our tax, um, our taxpayers in the long run, correct? Because uncertainties and we have to pay, plus we wouldn't possibly be at our, um, funding level by 2040, correct?
If I understand your question, that's correct, yes.
Okay. So looking at it from that perspective, then if we looked at, um, dropping, you know, that's being thrown around, um, sounds good today, looking at out years, um, there's also still that same possibility, even possibly greater of what we would then have to later ask for taxpayers down the road in order to compensate, um, for the pension funding. Possibly even could hurt us within the general fund if we are looking to even increase what we're already looking to pull, pull out of the general fund because we are actually pulling some money out of the general fund, minus the fact that we've stopped funding the general fund through this tax, correct? Am I understanding all this correctly?
Yes, we, we have essentially started to kind of decouple the property tax levy to some of these funding sources to, and then rely more on non-property tax general fund money to support the, the uptick. Um, so we're trying, we, we've recommended, staff recommendation is to, is to have a flat levy. Uh, and we can take any, any direction collectively from the council that you like, but our recommendation is to have a flat levy. Um, that, that seems to be a nice balance. We, we're still contributing, we're contributing 100% to the pension funds. Uh, we're drawing some, to obtain that, we're drawing from non-property tax revenues to maintain a flat levy. We, as we get further into the budget process, we'll, we'll be able to share more with you what's going on there, but we have, and growing expenditure needs that are not going to go away. Pension funding, capital funding, uh, inflationary funding, these things all impact us. So staff recommendation is to keep the levy flat, again, to balance that effort in terms of funding level and, and taxpayer burden.
So in the long run, instead of having a dip and then this high peak, we're kind of looking more at a more level, even if there is an up or down along the, the spectrum as we go along, it'll be more level versus high peaks and valleys.
If you're reading by the property ta, the pension funding, uh, we, we intend to recommend in the budget 100% of the, of the pension funding by 2040. Uh, we are only pulling a portion of that 100% funding model from property tax to maintain a flat levy. So it's our intention to absolutely recommend the council's budget process that we continue to fund pensions as aggressively as possible. Uh, Ms. Reese mentioned that we're using some of our surplus to fund, uh, kind of kickstart that extra, extra funding. We're also recommending that we, we fund at 100% to 2040 going forward.
Okay. That answers my questions and thank you for everything, um, in preparing this information. And it's been very helpful and, um, I, one thing I can say is, you know, I, I realize even all that we are doing to try to, to get to that level where we are fully funding pensions and so it doesn't have to be an issue for us. Though I know many communities are facing some very, um, heavy issues surrounding pensions right now. So thank you.
Mr. Preston?
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, I want to pick up on some other comments, uh, from colleagues here this evening and, uh, again, address exactly how this process works. So, um, our property tax funds, uh, from the town of Normal, it is give or take 11-ish percent of your property tax bill when you get it and have to pay your two installments every year. Um, that 11% that goes toward the town, uh, we spend that now, um, primarily on our, uh, police and our fire pensions. Um, IMRF is part of that as well, social security and Medicare, um, is as well, but police and fire, uh, are the big bulk of it. That is a result of one thing, but really two pieces of it. Uh, a state of Illinois mandate that all municipalities fund their police and fire pensions, uh, at least 90% funded by 2040. So the one piece being it is a state unfunded mandate on all municipalities. The other piece of that equation though, it is just good policy and makes fiscal sense to fund your public safety pension systems. And I don't think we have to look any further than, um, than the state of Illinois to see, uh, why there is so much value in actually being responsible with your, uh, with your pension and with public safety. So, um, what this levy that is proposed before us tonight does is it keeps the overall total dollar figure that the town is bringing in flat. It, um, as a result, reduces the rate, uh, that everybody is, um, paying, um, to accommodate, uh, the fact that homes are increasing in value, increase in value, but you're paying a lower rate to get the same level dollar figure for the overall levy as last year. We are also increasing our, uh, funding for those public pensions by pulling some money out of the general fund to do so. All of that, uh, is, I mean, is a very real approach that we talk about up here every single year. Um, all of that is a great story for Normal to tell, uh, and, uh, something that I'm, uh, very proud of, which is why our votes are, uh, most of the time unanimous on this. Um, one thing that I do want to, uh, jump on board with though, tonight, um, is a comment from my colleague, Mr. Nord about, uh, any, um, opportunity that we have to not only lower the rate that individuals are paying as is proposed, but to also lower the overall levy, uh, dollar figure so that both be, any way this is viewed, um, the total levy and the rate, um, people of Normal, the town's portion of their property tax, uh, bill, um, would be lowered, um, with that action. So with that, I'll kind of open it up. I know that, um, with how the, I mean, how, uh, Robert's rules goes, I'm not going to tee it up to, uh, my colleague on the other side of the table, but I will throw that out there, um, that, uh, that is something I'd be interested in, interested in discussing.
Further on this item?
Since we do have the ability to transfer money or use money from the general fund to offset whatever decision we make tonight regarding the property tax levy, and there's no requirement that we have to only use property tax levies to fund the pensions at the current rate that we've been planning, I move that this motion be amended to reduce the property tax levy by $200,000 from the current levy amount.
Thank you. Discussion on that item?
Could our colleague, Mr. Nord, explain where he pulled that $200,000 figure out
Mr. Nord?
It was just something that I thought was meaningful to the, um, taxpayers and the dollars in our budget is small enough that it's just not really significant. You know, Ms. Reese has got $500,000 just in her fund that's, that's, that's not allocated for anything. Well, it's, it's not, it's the contingency, the $500,000 contingency fund. We still have that.
It's currently zero.
It's currently zero?
Yes.
Okay, are we planning on doing that?
We haven't for a number of years. Correct.
Okay, good. Well, then it's just a number. I mean, I'm open to hearing a change, but I think it's got to be something significant. If it's just a dollar, it's going to be seen as meaningless. But I think $200,000 for this budget is not a lot, but for taxpayers, when they hear $200,000 reduction out of the, the $13 million levy, that to them is significant.
Do I still have the floor or no?
Uh, I'll go back to you since we.
Well, um, I shudder at the thought of just kind of pulling a number out of the sky because it sounds good. Yes, it's smaller and so to the extent that that feels like a win, maybe a short term win. Yes, it's smaller and so to the extent that that feels like a win, maybe a short-term win. But I think I was fooled by this idea once before, about three or so years ago. And it's not good policy to just pull numbers out of the sky here at the dais. And that has a, as I learned the hard way, a ripple effect, I'd like to remind my colleagues, a ripple effect on financial agencies and, and other financial institutions who are watching our decision-making policy that we would be so cavalier as to just pull out numbers from the sky on something as important as property tax levy. This could have, let me just put it more bluntly, this could have a detrimental effect on how our bond rating agencies look at us. If this is the way we would make decisions on such an important matter, so let's not go down that path again, is my first caution. The second caution, or second statement, I guess I want to say, is it, it's, I think, let's not lose or bury the headline, that we are holding our expenses steady in the face of a lot of otherwise increasing pressures to do otherwise. Inflation being one, the burden of keeping up with, the financial burden of keeping up with our, our pension obligations. And there would be a lot of temptation to increase. So I don't want to go down that path. I want to commend our, our staff for sharpening their pencils and figuring it away, out a way to keep the the amount that we're asking of property tax the same. And bear in mind that my property tax, anybody sitting up here, anybody in the audience today, all of, you know, each of our property tax bills are impacted only eleven or twelve percent, as Mr. Preston said. For every dollar that you are taxed on your property bill, it is only eleven or twelve cents that the town of Normal is impacting that. The other entities by and large are the schools, airport, binward, I think, county, thank you, several other agencies. I've often said that, you know, if, if ever a council member stands on your doorstep and says, I'm going to lower your property taxes. They only have about eleven percent chance to do that, because that's, 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 that's the only lever we have. We don't have the majority of, of power on your property tax bill. Is it, is it in our best interest for you, the taxpayers, to keep our, our ask the same? You bet. And that's what we're doing here. But to willy-nilly, there's a technical term, willy-nilly, just pull it down by meh, $200,000. That's, that is very scary policymaking. I was fooled by it once, I won't be fooled twice. Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
I just want to clarify for the record, a contingency fund is not the property of Ms. Reese, the city manager. The contingency fund is something that the council elects when possible to have emergency dollars that can be tapped for contingencies. And in terms of making a further reduction in our property tax on the argument that, you know, we've had surpluses in the past. I want to point out that in the prior year, it was used for an $8 million loan payoff, bond refinance, well, bond retirement. And looking through the debt schedules, I was pleased to see that the majority of the debt we're holding runs from just under two percent to five percent. And as we're seeing from what the Fed is doing currently, we were very, very prescient to have opted to do that at a time when we had the funds available. And, and now with the Fed continuing their gestures towards increasing the rates, there is talk of a possible recession. And that would result in unemployment, which could reduce the revenues that we receive from elsewhere. I do not think it prudent to take this action on the basis of a $200,000 figure that has no basis in support for how it was arrived at. So I'm not in favor of this.
Further on this? Okay. Mr. Nord?
Thank you. If you're not happy with $200,000, you know, pick a number. You know, we bought two luxury vehicles that cost way over $100,000 the other day.
Mayor, point of order, please, can we?
We're, we're voting on this amendment, Mr..
And also, I would say that we do have the power, we've got the power right now to lower property taxes. So for folks to say we don't have the power to do this, we absolutely do. We are not buying the vehicles with cash that we've already taxed the taxpayers for. We've now changed our purchasing model to now where we're buying them.
Mr. Nord, would you get back to, get back to the topic, please?
It's in this specific write-up where he talks about how we're buying vehicles through a lease program now, so that is absolutely relevant.
Mr. Nord, you are out of order. I've asked you to stick to the issue, you're out of order.
It's in this write-up.
Do we have further discussion on the amendment? Please call the roll on the amendment.
For clarity, what is a yes vote signifying and what is a no vote?
A yes vote would decrease the levy by $200,000, a no vote would not.
I move that this motion be amended to
Oh, you can't do, Mr. Nord, you can't, Mr. Nord, you can't, Mr. Nord, you can't do that until we vote on this one. You can introduce a second amendment.
No, we have to vote on this one first because this is an amendment to the original amendment, to lower it from 200 to 100,000. So that has to go first.
Or Mr. Preston can just remove his second and you could start over with the new amendment, correct?
Do you want to amend the amendment?
Yes.
Okay. Make your, make your amendment to the amendment.
I would like to amend the amendment to be a $100,000 reduction instead of 200,000.
Do I have a second on that?
And remove my second probably for whatever.
No, you, so now we'll discuss, we'll go round robin again and we'll have the same discussion on $100,000. Who wants to speak?
I'd like to call the question.
Thank you. Do I have a second to call the question?
Yes.
Please call the roll on, call the question. They're stacking up here.
This is calling the question. All right. Mr. Nord?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes, for call the question.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mrs. Loren?
Yes.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. So the amendment to the amendment has failed. Now we will vote on the amendment.
No, that was the call the question.
That was just call the question.
Oh, call the question. So now we're, sorry, it's stacked up a little too high for me here. So now we will call motion on the amendment to the amendment.
Yeah. And this is to change it by a hundred grand?
To change it to 100.
We're just, we're just voting on the $100,000 reduction, proposed reduction to the levy. Correct, Mr. Day? We think?
Yes.
And a yes vote signifies that you're in favor of the reduction?
Yes. Go right.
Ms. Smith?
No.
Ms. Harris?
No.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
No.
Mrs. Loren?
No.
Mr. Nord?
Yes.
Mayor Kuss?
No. That amendment fails. Now we will take a vote on the $200,000.
Ms. Harris?
No.
Mr. Preston?
We're taking, I'm sorry, we're taking a vote on the 200,000 also?
Yeah.
Yes, because we stacked up some amendments here tonight.
That was an aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
No.
Mrs. Loren?
No.
Mr. Nord?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
No.
Mayor Kuss?
No. That amendment fails. So we're now, we're at the motion to authorize the preparation of the 2022 property tax levy ordinance. Please call a roll on that.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Loren?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. That motion is approved. That concludes our general orders. We have one item of new business, and that's to approve, submit a grant application to the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity for a $500,000 community development, violence prevention, and administrative cost grant.
Move approval?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to invite Chief Petrilli to come forward. We're in a unique situation, council, in terms of the state of Illinois budget for fiscal year 2223 included funds for law enforcement agencies for efforts related to crime and violence prevention. And we didn't, we were unaware of it until the state budget was a pass, was passed. And we then learned this past summer that the state's budget included a half million dollar allocation for the town of Normal directly toward the Normal Police Department for kind of general crime prevention initiatives. As I've shared with council members in conversations, that, that the challenge for us is that it's a one-time grant, which really is limiting for, you know, investing in staff or long-term program initiatives. So I thought this would be a great opportunity as we're getting ready to prepare to receive the state dollars. We have to fill out an application, let the state know what our general purposes are with the dollars. And prior to submitting that grant application, I thought it would be prudent to have this conversation with council so that you would be aware of how we intend to direct those funds. So I've asked Chief Petrilli to come forward and share with you in general, where we anticipate those dollars being directed. And with council approval, then we will execute the grant agreement and send it back to the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. And the only other thing I'll mention is that when we, when we do receive the funds, we have a limited amount of time to spend those dollars. But anything that we procure in terms of equipment or investment, we'll, we'll come back to council as required by the procurement policy. So for investing in equipment, it's over 25,000, that ultimate acquisition would come back to you for approval. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Petrilli, who will give you some of the information that, in terms of his plans.
Thank you, City Manager Reese. Yeah, pretty straightforward, seeking that approval to submit the grant implication for a half million dollars. We've met as a, as a staff and also sought, you know, input from some of my other peers and, and other surrounding agencies to see how other municipalities were spending the money. We know the, the focus being community development, crime prevention. There's also a caveat in there for administrative costs. And what we've done with, with the $500,000, you know, looking at where we could optimize the use of those funds, you know, for the purposes that are defined, kind of separated into about four different buckets of technology, enhanced protective equipment for officers, training, and then an education component as well that falls in, into that grouping. When you look at technology, we've, we've got some, some wishlist items, things like trailer surveillance cameras, tethered drones, things like that, that could be used and optimized in an array of different you know, opportunities from community events to post-incident readiness to, you know, pre, pre-planning for, for a host of different community events. We could leverage that technology in those realms. We've also looked at some enhanced officer safety gear, which would be rifle-rated plates for officers to wear within their vest carriers that we currently issue, similar to the one that I'm wearing now. It's simply a rifle-rated plate that's an insertion into that vest carrier. We've also looked at some other enhanced, rapid response equipment that would allow us to be more ready for larger events and, and, and the instance that we had, maybe had a you know, some type of disaster event, you know, that, that occurred in our community, we'd be able to respond to that in a much quicker fashion, have the equipment preloaded, ready to go, that would enhance our capabilities to do that. So that's a lot of kind of the, the gist of what we're looking at. Also some, in the technology realm, some upgraded digital forensic software that would allow our, our investigators to be more thorough in investigations. You know, and come up with, you know, different evidence that's, this required throughout, you know, a numerous amount of forensic different investigations that we do. So that's just kind of a roundabout, some of the buckets at least that we've looked at allocating this money. Should we receive it from the state? And that's why I'm here tonight to clarify any questions or open that discussion with the council.
Questions for Chief Petrilli? I kind of like the, the idea of increasing the technology that, that you're talking about. Those are beyond nice to haves. It's, it's going to really make your job and your officer's job a lot easier. Ms. Smith?
So this grant funding is available, but we still have to submit an application. And is there any certainty that we would receive a favorable response just by submitting the grant application?
If I understand your, your question correctly, yes, there, there would be a vetting process through the state.
Oh, okay.
Once we submitted the grant application, it would have a detailed, you know, description of what it is, exactly how we're looking to allocate the funds. And then we would probably correspond back and forth with the state until we met whatever parameters we needed to, you know, in regards to the grant.
So they're not prepared necessarily to just write us a check because we submitted an application. They would be vetting how we wanted to use the funds?
That is my understanding that it's a reimbursement grant, so the city manager Reese said we'd be coming back to the council with, you know, we'd be following all of our procurement guidelines as it, as it relates to equipment acquisition, things like that.
Now, I know that there's currently a survey that you're soliciting information from. Is that separate from this grant program?
It's completely separate. That, that's on our commission for accreditation that we, every year we push out the, that survey and actually we're getting a very good response with that survey. But any community input that comes in that, that we could leverage, you know, for the dismit, the, the decision-making process for how we allocate these funds would definitely be considered.
And when you're talking about for large events, when we had the incident where we had the train derailment and the crowd that came for the Liam Marlene concert, it, it was fortuitous that those situations were so convenient to your headquarters. But what you're looking for at a trailer would, would be some opportunity to have mobile response capability in the event something of a similar nature arose. Is that part of what your thought process is on one of the uses of these funds?
Yeah, the, the rapid response trailer that I mentioned could be used for a myriad of different applications, but that would of course be one. If we had a large event that required, you know, some type of special use equipment, that would be, that would be the purpose of that trailer, that it would be loaded, that we could contain a situation or a scene or, or an incident and, and be more effective in, in our monitoring and, and, you know, ultimately the way that we're handling that.
Okay, thank you.
Further, Mr. Nord?
A couple of questions. The items that we're looking at purchasing with this grant, or with these grant dollars, are any of these items that are currently in the budget?
No.
So these are all new things. Is there a restriction that says we can't use this to offset current expected costs?
And when you bring that up, that's actually something that we just got done going through, obviously, the, the budget process. And these are things that were, the, the grant was timely in respect to the fact that it did allow us to look at, hey, what are some operational capabilities that we can improve on, that we wouldn't necessarily have to pursue budget dollars to do? We could actually suffice, meeting those needs through these grant dollars that were timely in that respect. So does that answer your question?
So these are all new items. These aren't things that we had planned to purchase. So they weren't priority enough to make the first cut for our budget. Since there's money available, this is like the second, second tier items, I guess?
I wouldn't call them second tier. I would. I would say that these are now viable options due to this, this money that's being allocated from the state.
Okay. So this won't offset any current expense that we're planning on. Then could you explain 3D scanner? How is a 3D scanner going to prevent crime?
Well, you could use it in a myriad of different ways, but the 3D scanner, what it really does for us is when we are called to a scene, and we've had, you know, several, several lately that we could have leveraged that technology, whether it's a multiple-vehicle crash scene, this could be an extensive crime scene, this could be, you know, a myriad of different applications. But what it does is it, it limits our time on the ground and makes us more effective as far as diagramming a scene, whether that's an intersection, whether that's a building. And when that comes into the preventative measures, does that actually prevent crime? You know, that may be, if that's the question. I think the way we prevent crime is understanding crime that's happened, and we learn the method of operation or the MO sometimes to crimes and, and how they occur, where they occur, why they're occurring, and we use that, you know, to enhance our operations in the future. And I think that 3D scanner, it saves on staff time and allows us to be much more precise and pinpoint in the investigation and, and pre-planning of events when we, you know, we, we deem that necessary for tactical consideration.
Okay. And then the response trailer, I guess it's, it's listed in here as trailer, there is a, yeah, rapid response trailer. Is this, does the, does the county have one, or the, is, is there one already in our community?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, so this would be something that Bloomington doesn't have, the county doesn't have, it would be the only one here, right?
This would be specific to our needs, yeah. That's how I would, would look to design it and set it up is, you know, what are, what are the applications, you know, what would be the best fit for this trailer as far as equipment and outfitting and how we could use it best for the things that we, we tend to do more frequently and set it up that way so we could respond to crime scenes, an active incident, a myriad of different, you know, threats or, or post-scene events that we could show up and manage with some of the resources that we can allocate in that trailer.
And would it be, would it be, would it be possible to design it so that way Bloomington could use it too if they had an incident? Because, you know, they can't plan just as much as we can't plan for one.
Well, sure. I mean, anything's possible, but we have mutual aid agreements that if we had a rapid response trailer that was outfitted with resources that they need and they requested that during a mutual aid incident, obviously, we would, you know, be good partners and, and always respond and, and allow them to use equipment in, in that mutual aid setting.
Chief, if I could jump in, chief, we have a rapid response team, correct? So this would be used to help equip them, keep, keep them more efficient, have everything there when they need it.
Yeah, our emergency response unit, yes, it would be equipment that would be ideal for them in these types of situations as well.
Okay, because I'm in favor of getting the equipment, you know, the 3D scanner and these other things. It's just, I would like a conversation to start with Bloomington and the county, so that way they know the tools we're getting, so we don't get redundant things. And because I'm sure that they're able to get the same grants too. You know, maybe there's needs that they could get that we're not getting, that we could use if, if the need arises and vice versa, so that way the community gets more bang for the buck. So I just ask that you reach out with them, coordinate something with them, let them know we're getting this, because if they need it and it's available, would like us to be able to offer it to them. And then vice versa, if they've got something we need, that they would return the favor too. So, thank you.
And, and just to make you feel better about that, that has been done. I met with, with Bloomington administrators last week and talked over the specifics of, of this grant, so they're well aware of that, as long as, as well as most of the major city chiefs and, and our chiefs of larger Illinois cities group. I've discussed these, you know, these allocations, what we hope to, to get at length. And, you know, I think a lot of us are on the same page with that, that if, if we needed it in a mutual aid situation, we can, we can do that.
Yeah, and, and if there's something that costs more than just what one of these grants is going to cost, if we can work with the other municipalities, that, hey, we contribute funds from all these different grants, that now we can get something, I guess, better than what we could do alone, you know, that would be fantastic for the community. All right, thank you.
Mr. Preston?
Thanks, Mayor. In response to a comment, an earlier comment that I believe I heard correctly, the chief at a time when you guys are, you and your officers are facing what I would have to believe is about the most unpredictable time to be a law enforcement officer, where you never know if a routine traffic stop is going to be a routine traffic stop or not, I would certainly and want to publicly suggest that any notion to reduce the town's operational budget for the police department as a result of the fact that there's a one-time opportunity for a grant with the state is not something that, not something I'm in favor for. It is also not lost on me that none of us up here around the table work full-time, nor have we in law enforcement. And I think that this is a department where your guys' everyday needs are maybe not as obvious to all of us, because we're not living it day in and day out. And it, the things that you put in here pass the reasonable test in my mind. And beyond that, I trust you to know what your guys' department needs to be the most effective in serving the community. So thanks for what you guys are doing, and I'm certainly in favor of it.
Thank you.
Further on this, Mr. McCarthy? Did you break your microphone?
Apparently not. I figured it out. I, I don't have any specific questions for you, chief. I know this is, this topic has been discussed for a little bit, but I appreciate the explanation of, of some of the component pieces of it and a little more depth that you did tonight. Echo some comments from my colleague, Mr. Preston, about, you know, anytime we have an opportunity to bring grant dollars back to the community to, to reduce, you know, additional cost for our, our local community, I'm generally in favor no matter what it is. But, but for this one particularly, to expand your guys' capability and, and what you do, and what was so aptly stated is the unpredictability of being in law enforcement and to be a well-equipped police department, I know has a bearing on your ability to attract people to our police department and, and our team. And I know that's very challenging right now to attract good, quality police officers that want to stay in, in policing and, and to choose wisely where they, they want to be. And so Mayor and staff in full support of this for a number of reasons. Thanks.
Thank you. Further? Please call the roll.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Loren?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. The grant, the submittal is approved. That concludes our business. We have one public commenter tonight, Ms. Catherine Cannon, if you want to come forward.
Just to, to go over the rules, we'd ask you to state your name for the record as part of your testimony here tonight, and you're limited to three minutes.
You'll have to keep me in that lineup. I know my coach up here will. I want to address not you all as council members, but as trustees that are published on a nomination paper that I have to participate as one of you. And I have just begun the process of meeting candidates that will be moving on from this council into higher levels of leadership, and I wish them the best. With that last $500,000 grant, that spurred me on a little bit more with how to address all of you. I see that it includes economic development, $500,000, and community development. Talking to people in the community, they are hot with this leadership council, but you are trustees. You represent the people of the town of Normal. They trust you, but not all of them trust you. There are hidden things behind the scenes that, just sitting here for the first time tonight, that I've been listening to. And I'm just going to address one thing. We've lived 30 years in the town of Normal. We moved here because it was a dry town. And I've went around to neighbors, soliciting signatures, but more importantly, listening to them. And the things that are hid, that have been revealed here tonight, that's not a good thing. I used to watch you all on television, on Comcast basic cable, and I gained a lot of respect for certain individuals. Sonya Reese, I don't know if she's related to you, very high respect for that lady. And I live at the, on Wilmec Drive, which is one of the initial, it's where the original farmhouse was built. And our houses are built around that off of Adelaide and College Avenue. People have been dealing with a drain that floods. I brought it to the city's attention. A proactive second in line to the top person has come out, has viewed the area, has been very upfront and honest with me, that this is not a drain that's connected to the sewer system. It is a drain called a French drain. It was known by the previous person who lived on that Wilmec Drive, who had to do with the sewer and the drainage and all of that. And then explained to me what a French drain is. It looks like a regular water drain, but it drains down, it hits rocks, it builds up the water level, and then it floods the road. This is on Adelaide. This is where a school is built. And one of the people that signed my petition today and two other people that are running for this council, which are trustees and entrusted by this council, by the people of the town of Normal, don't trust you anymore. Whether it be for luxury vehicles, new setup, microphones, whatever, if you can't show respect for one another, whoever wants to speak needs to speak. And I know that there's a high possibility I may not be on this. I have a nursing background, I have, I'm an orphan, I come from a small town of Rutland with MDR as my city, my school, and I listen to the community, I listen to the people, people that don't even have children living in their home.
Ms. Cannon, as, as you requested, you're over your time limit--
Okay.
--by a, by a full minute.
Well, bless you. Thank you, Mayor and trustees.
Before taking a motion for adjournment, are there concerns or comments? Hearing none? Motion for adjournment, please.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Loren?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.